Tuesday, July 23rd will come to order. Is this not working? It's on. Is it not coming through? Okay, it is on. I'm not sure. Maybe we want to... Hello? Is it coming through now? No? It's coming through now. Okay, let's do it again. That was a practice run. Good evening. The San Dimas City Council meeting for Tuesday, July 23rd will come to order. But before we begin, I would like to note this meeting may be shorter than other meetings. Residents may notice that we're missing two of our colleagues tonight. Because their participation benefits the city and enriches discussions, we ensure that such items requiring more in-depth discussions are part of a future agenda where our colleagues can participate. With that said, will you all rise with me to say the Pledge of Allegiance? Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? Here?
Here.
Here.
Record will reflect that we do have a quorum with Councilmember Vienna absent and Mayor Bajar absent.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Next, we will move on to oral communications. Members of the audience are invited to address the City Council on any item on this agenda or not on this agenda. Public comment will not be taken during each individual agenda item except for public hearing items. Comments on public hearing items will be heard when that item is scheduled for discussion. Under the provisions of the Brown Act, the legislative body is prohibited from engaging in discussion on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. However, your concerns may be referred to staff or set for discussion at a later date. Each speaker will be limited to speaking once for up to three minutes. And with that said, Madam Clerk, do we have any speaker cards for public comment this evening?
Mayor Portem, the first speaker is Steve Jackson.
Mr. Jackson.
Actually, he's speaking on the other business item for Sycamore Canyon lease. He can, yes, speak now.
Good evening. I just wanted to introduce myself. My name is Steve Jackson. My wife and I are the people that are purchasing Sycamore Canyon from the previous owners. We're really excited about this. We're really excited to raise our family here in San Dimas. You know, we have young children and them growing up on a ranch is super important to us. And it's important to us that all the children in the community get opportunities to do these kinds of things. So keeping this culture alive and keeping the business going is really important to us.
Thank you. Are there any other speaker cards this evening?
The next speaker is Norah Chen with the library.
Good evening. Mayor Portem, City Council members, City Manager and staff. So my name is Norah Chen and I'm the manager of the San Dimas Library. And just want to let everybody know our summer discovery program went very well. More than 500 people, the residents, signed up our program and they completed more than 6,000 activities and more than 1,200 books were read. So, and among them, then five lucky families will win the four-pack of Regent Waters tickets. And Regent Waters are the, they are very generous. This year, they donated a ticket to all the county libraries. So all county libraries, each library, 85 branches. They, each library will receive the five-pack of four tickets for Regent Waters, which is, we really appreciate that. And on Thursday, July 25th at 3:00 PM, we will celebrate the end of the summer discovery program with face painting, the balloon art, and some other activities. And we remember last time we have the One County, One Book Program. We will close that on this Saturday, which will be at downtown LA at 5:00 to 7:00. So it will be on the Monila Grand Park. So I know it's a little bit far, but if you are really interested and you can call the library that they have a free shuttle at the West Covina Library, so they can arrange that. And the last is the, we can see the COVID cases are rising and the library that we offer the free COVID test kits. And if you are planning to visit some state parks recently, then you can come to the library to check out the free that state parks pass, so you can get a free admission. Thank you.
Those were all the speaker cards, Mayor Portem.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Do we have any other speakers from the audience who would like to address council tonight?
Good evening. Bob Olander, Mayor Portem, City Council, City Manager, staff. I want to let everyone, remind everyone that we have a great booster club, San Dimas Sheriff Booster Club. And they're having their 29th annual car show this Sunday, the 28th. We encourage all residents, families, friends to come out and see some great vehicles. There'll be some activities for families. There'll be a pancake breakfast by the mountain rescue. There's a small fee for that. But most of all, these volunteers donate tens of thousands of hours to this community. And so the money that is raised by this car show, I think importantly, I want everyone to know where it's going. The money supports the San Dimas Public Safety Volunteers, the Uniform Reserves, the Mounted Posse, Mountain Rescue Team, Disaster Communication Services, and law enforcement explorers. So you know where the money is going. We appreciate the good attendance. And come out Sunday and enjoy some great vehicles, some great time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olander. Do we have any other speakers?
Hi, my name is Dave Milbrian, government teacher at San Dimas High School. Mayor Portem, members of the City Council and City Staff. I came here tonight because it's a good time during the summer to enjoy a City Council meeting. I'm a government teacher. It's my lifeblood, so I wanted to come out and see us in action here as well. Had a chance to talk to Mr. Constantine about a project we hope to work on with our AP Government students this next year, coordinate that. But I also want to come as part of my side gig, my side job in screenwriting, which I do for a bit of fun on the side. I did email a couple of City Council members, I think a few weeks ago, saying we are urgently looking for a few extras for a film shoot we were doing. Just want to let you know we got enough people for that film shoot. We wrapped up filming of a short film we are making to go to film producers to make a full-length movie on a book that I've written. So we're having a little bit of fun with that. But wanted to thank City Council for being generous in a quick email that I sent out. And I appreciate what City Council does on a regular basis here, representing the residents of San Dimas. So, and we're looking forward to being here, hopefully in February, March, for Students and Government Day again for an exciting year this next year. Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Mr. Milbrian. Do we have any other speakers who would like to address council tonight? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the consent calendar. Consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion unless a member of the City Council requests separate discussion. With that said, I do have a few questions on items. Items four, six, eight, and nine. My questions are related to clarification of these items and should not impact approval. With that, I'll open it up for my questions and any others unless a colleague of the City Council has an objection.
No objection.
Okay. With that said, let me start with item number four. Item number four is approve a professional services agreement with Interwest Consulting Group in an amount not to exceed $150,000 for on-call planning services and approve the appropriation of funds for the agreement. Do I just address my question? Okay, great. Thank you. So my first question regarding this item is I understand that we are using this consulting firm to cover the responsibilities of current open roles. And I wondered if you could articulate when we might see those roles filled?
Sure, of course. So currently, right now, we have actually three vacancies in the planning department. So right now, the planning department is being run by just the planning manager and myself as well. So we are just trying to keep our heads above water. The contract would serve to provide on-call support services for two contract planners, a senior planner and an associate. We are actually having interviews tomorrow to backfill two of those positions, potentially two associates, two assistants, or one of each. So we're hoping to potentially have someone, two people on board within the next month and a half or so. And then we have, one of our senior planners is out and she's expected to come back in September. So we expect to use these two contract planners, probably for the next month and a half or so, back when we're fully staffed.
Thank you. I have no other questions on this item.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to item number six, approve the additional national opioid settlement with the Kroger Company. Adopt Resolution 2024-53, authorizing the City Manager to execute the settlement documents. Mr. City Manager, my question for you is I understand that this is part of a larger group of settlements that is totaling $42,366. The portion of the settlement is $26,400, which we expect to be paid over an 11-year period. Would you articulate a little bit more of the background of the payment and the overall settlements that we've had with multiple entities?
I can speak to that, but so can the City Attorney. And so the council, back in 2021, as part of a national settlement, settled for $42,366 over a number of years, those payments to be spread out very long. The payments were really small and at the time, the council had the option of either accepting the funds then implementing programs, which would have required reporting and accounting for a very small amount of dollar funds, which would cost more to do the accounting than it would be to run the program, or provide those resources to the county so the county can then pool resources and provide larger-scale programs that accomplish the same goal. The council decided to allocate those funds to the county, which alleviated the reporting and accounting requirements for the city. In 2023, we had another settlement with another group of vendors that estimated a total of about $40,000 over a period ranging as high as 15 years. Same situation, very small dollar amount, where the cost to administer the program would exceed the benefit. So we allocated that to the county. This is now the third one with the recommended action being the same one as the other two. And the one for this time is $26,400, and we would be allocating that back to the county. All in total, all three grants would still provide a small dollar amount and our cost to administer would still be, there wouldn't be the cost-benefit to run those programs if we ran them all together.
At what point would it make sense, what amount would it be, where it makes sense for the city to take on such responsibility? Is there a figure in mind?
I have not assessed what dollar amount. I would say if it was this large. But if we had another settlement that came in and had a far larger number, we would look at that and say, does it make sense or not? But we don't have programs that align with this type of public health-type programming in a city. Counties are typically better equipped and their duties in the county do involve public health. So I think it's more appropriate to have the county implement a program that we can benefit countywide.
Thank you very much. I have no further questions on this item. Question, item number eight, approve a renewal agreement with Schuster Advisory Group, LLC for planned consulting and investment fiduciary services for a three-year term with the option to extend up to two additional years at a rate of $25,500, $25,500 per year for the 457B deferred compensation, 401A defined contribution plan and retiree healthcare savings plans, and authorize the City Manager to execute the agreement in a form approved by the City Attorney. Mr. O'Brien, I understand that our partnership with this particular advisor group has been successful and they've yielded significant savings in our retirement plan. And I wondered if you could talk about who we used prior and who else we considered before selecting Schuster and what gives you the confidence that Schuster is the right firm going forward, not just based on recent history, but in general, if you could articulate your rationale?
Yeah, so previously, we didn't have any other fiduciary partner. The city was acting solely as a fiduciary over the plans, which we are the plan sponsor. And in doing so, we identified a number of concerns with our acting as fiduciary, where we weren't meeting all the typical fiduciary standards that could lead us to a potential lawsuit. When Schuster approached us, they were recommended by City of Leverne and City of Clermont. We went looking to see what other agencies have done with using a single record keeper, which we were looking for at the time. At the time, we had three record keepers, which is also an issue with being the fiduciary plan sponsor, being that they had different rates and different plans and different fund structures. So we met with Schuster. There wasn't really any other financial advisory group that's kind of going into this space. Schuster was really one of the first ones and one of the only, I think, one of two that are really in the space currently. So they went through, they did bids, they came back with Mission Square being the lowest provider for fee structure. And Schuster Advisor Group then provided a fun lineup. And they also do continuing education for our employees. They do all the transparency documentation for us. So they've been a great partner for us in order to make sure the employees are fully aware of the plans, the costs, how their performances are going. And they do continue to come out at least once a year and partnering with Mission Square, who have their rep rec comes out quarterly. So they've just been doing the job. They're, what they do pretty much assures that in the event that someone came after us for legal action, we have as much documentation support to combat that type of lawsuit and meet our fiduciary responsibilities. So that's very much been the relationship. I think it's been very successful and worth continuing on.
I have no further questions. Any questions? Okay. Moving on to item nine, approve an agreement with Edwin Gallagher, Huey, and Blum as special legal counsel for litigation associated with the BKK landfill. My question on this item is that I know that we, the recommendation is to approve this agreement. It stipulates a $205 per hour rate for all attorney's fees, $95 per hourly rate for paralegals. I just wondered if the City Manager or Council had an estimate of how much we expect the work to be or any type of cap that would be at all considered by the council in considering this item?
So the procurement of this special legal counsel is because of a closure of a landfill that the city or a city vendor Waste Management had dumped waste in addition to more than 50 other jurisdictions. Where are, the post-closure requirements for remediation become obligations of jurisdictions. And so we need to go out and get a special counsel that has that expertise. Unfortunately, the number of jurisdictions that are involved on both sides pose conflict of interests, where a law firm can't represent two adverse parties. And so we've had to not utilize our current law firm that does our general legal services to ensure that that conflict does not occur. They're legally obligated not to participate there. And so I respect that decision. They need to do that. We've tried to find other law firms, but a lot of them are also conflicted. And so we landed on Edwin Gallagher with Huey and Blum as special legal counsel. We don't know what the total amount will be. It really depends on the process that's involved. That currently is in its earliest stages. But I will point to, as you look to the agreement, the hourly rates that they're quoting were quite low compared to some of the other firms and what prices they were quoting. So at least if the total number of hours were equal for two different firms, this is a better deal financially than other options.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Manager. That concludes my questions. Members of the City Council, do we have a motion for approval of the consent calendar? Move approval.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? Yes.
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 The record will reflect that we have a 3-0 vote. Consent calendar is approved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving on to their business, agenda item, Obi-1. Add a Star Wars name there. Mr. Parks and Recreation Director.
Members of, about Wasserman, Director of Parks and Recreation. This item pertains to the transfer of the lease assignment and assumption agreement. Let me start over. Let's see. Authorizing the City Manager to execute the assignment and assumption agreement and lease guarantee to effectuate a transfer of the Sycamore Canyon Equestrian Center lease from DNL Ranch Management Company to S&amp;S Equine. Council is aware the city operates the Sycamore Canyon Equestrian facility and it is a 17-acre facility, provides boarding for approximately 140 horses. They also have amenities that include horse stalls, wash stations, turnouts, four large arenas, and two covered barns. Facility has been operated by DNL Ranch Management Company since about 1985, generates approximately $40,000 a year for the city. DNL Ranch Management Company has exercised its rights under Article 8 of the lease agreement to identify another management entity, which in this case is S&amp;S Equine, to whom it wishes to assign its least interests, excuse me, assign its interest in the lease agreement to operate the Sycamore Canyon Equestrian facility. In addition to the lease agreement, the city is also recommending that S&amp;S Equine also be assigned all the responsibilities and obligations of the three-party agreement, which addresses the use, development, and maintenance for the rodeo arena. The city worked with a consultant to conduct our due diligence on S&amp;S Equine, and they're here this evening. We worked with a consultant, determined that they are sufficiently capitalized to operate the facility. The Jacksons are also providing a personal guarantee to fulfill all financial obligations related to the operation of the facility. And the Jacksons were also found to possess the experience and the skills needed to operate the facility. And they have about 40 years' combined experience with operating equestrian facilities, management, operations, competitions, and training, and programming. The Jacksons also presented a business plan that focuses on upgrading amenities, improving maintenance standards, and adding equestrian events and programs to better engage the equestrian community. And the Jacksons will also implement a comprehensive marketing plan to reintroduce the facility to the community. There would be no fiscal impact if council approves a recommended action. There's no impact because S&amp;S Equine would assume the exact same contract with the exact same terms and obligations that the current lease operator currently has. And with that, the recommended action is adopting Resolution 2024-55, approving and authorizing the City Manager to execute the assignment and assumption agreement and lease guarantee to effectuate a transfer of the lease agreement to operate the Sycamore Canyon Equestrian Center and transfer the three-party community arena agreement from DNL Ranch Management Company to S&amp;S Equine. And with that, I'm available if council has any questions.
Well, I don't have any questions. I just want to say that I'm very excited about the future of Sycamore Canyon Equestrian Center. I'd like to welcome the Jackson family into our community. I think you know how I'm feeling about this. I'm feeling very good about this. And I'm looking forward to a successful partnership.
Yeah, no questions for me as well, but of course, to the Jacksons, this is really exciting to have you. Thank you for coming to the meeting as well. It's nice to meet you, but a face to the name. Obviously, this isn't a short-term commitment because it hasn't been in years past or contracts passed either. And we look forward to being partners with you and maintaining that facility and all the good things that are to come. Welcome not only you as operators, but also your family to the community as well. You're going to be valued community members, I'm sure, and we'll see you around town. Thanks.
We will move on to oral communications on this item. Members of the audience.
We need a motion and a second and an action by the council?
I'll move approval that we approve Resolution 2024-55 as outlined by staff.
I'll second that.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Weber?
Yes.
Councilmember Bertakos?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Nakano?
Yes.
That motion passes, but a 3-0 approval?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving on to the next item, City Reports. Mr. City Manager? Are there any other communications here? Okay, I got confused. My apologies. We'll move on to oral communications on this item. Members of the audience, speakers are limited to three minutes or as may be determined by the chair. Madam Clerk, do you have any speaker requests or cards?
I do not, Mayor Portem.
Are there any other speakers who would like to address the council on this matter? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to, sorry, we will move on to City Reports. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor Portem. The only report is, we have noticed over the last few weeks at how hot it gets outside. We publicize that we have a cooling center that we utilize, the senior center, while it's operating during the course of the week for cooling when it becomes too excessive. So we ask residents if they have a need, they're welcome, more than welcome to come down to our center. We also have a protocol that if the temperature gets too hot, we tend to cancel programs that involve outdoor activities, such as T-ball, which was canceled today. So you, we may get questions about why the programs aren't operating. The safety of our children, our participants, is paramount. So as temperatures rise, we will make strategic decisions to temporarily shut down programming to protect them. So with that, I will turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Mr. City Attorney?
I have no reports tonight, Mayor Portem.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Members of the City Council, are there any report on meetings attended at the expense of the local agency pursuant to AB 1234-GC 53232.3D?
No.
Seeing none, we will move on to City Council reports for future items, comments, and updates. Mr. Weber?
I can confirm the City Manager's report that it is hot out. I think we all can. It turns out, last weekend, as air conditioners often do, mine broke and it was about 85 degrees in my house. And it never, I'm sure we've all experienced this, it never happens in the middle of the week when you can call a repairman and they can come out and it'd be no big deal. And I fortunately was able to put my AC repairman hat on and fix it without managing to electrocute myself. But it was quite interesting there for a night when we didn't have air conditioning and fans all over the place going. It is really hot and it's great that we have the senior center as a community resource and a cooling center. I was about to take a cot and go drag it down to the cooling center myself. But yeah, stay hydrated. It really, really has been a scorcher this summer. And it doesn't seem like there's any sign of it letting up. I did want to thank our San Dimas Sheriff's Station deputies for their response to a major incident that occurred last Thursday. The investigation is still ongoing. I don't have all the details and I don't want to speculate as to anything. So I'll just leave it at that. But of course, as always, their quick response and action and professionalism ensured that the situation was handled appropriately and that our community was safe. So I appreciate that. Thank you. And just as a side note, I know it seems like the council is very slim today. But for at least this weekend, it'll get a little slimmer. I guess the end of summer is the time which we leave town. But I'll be out of town this weekend, visiting an old friend of mine that I haven't seen in many, many years. So I'm excited to do that, but that means I'm not going to be here for the Booster's Car Show. I apologize in advance, but I do encourage the community to come out to that. I make it a point to go to that every year. It is a really good time. There are some fantastic entries in that show. It's always worth coming down and taking a look around at what people bring out to show everybody. So it is a good event and it supports a great cause, so I encourage everybody to attend. But that is the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Ms. Bertakos? Ms. Bertakos?
Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for being here. Thank you so much for watching out there in TV land. I also wanted to thank our sheriff's department, the fire department for continuing to keep San Dimas safe. And I wanted to thank our community for respecting our deputies while they're trying to keep us safe in those moments. By staying away and letting everyone do what they need to do, that is the best thing that we can do. So as things become more available, I'm sure we will learn more, but thank you, everyone, for keeping safety our number one priority. Everyone spoke a little bit about the car show coming up. I will be there because I didn't get the memo about going on vacation. So I will happily be there. My knowledge of cars is about this small, but I always enjoy seeing the community out there. Our next San Dimas Business Watch meeting is coming up on Friday, July 26th. It is at 8:30 at the sheriff's station. This is open to the public. It's a fantastic time to come and learn new strategies in staying safe, whether it's for your business or your home. So I highly encourage anyone and everyone to come out and join me on that day. And then our city birthday barbecue is just around the corner, August 3rd, from 5 to 9. The city is turning 64 years old, so I hope you will join me that day. Maybe we can start hoping for cooler weather now and maybe it'll work. But please come out and join us. San Dimas is very special in the ways that we celebrate together, so I look forward to seeing everyone.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bertakos. So I first just wanted to send good wishes to our mayor, as well as Councilmen Vienna who are not here tonight. We look forward to their return and wish them well. I also want to welcome back our city manager who returned from vacation. We're delighted to have you back and of course, you missed nothing while you were gone. So it's good that you were able to recharge and we look forward to working with you in the coming weeks. Along with the other events that were mentioned by my colleagues, I also wanted to mention National Night Out, which I believe is on August 2nd. Is that correct, Captain? The 6th, okay. August 6th. I'm glad I clarified that with you. I would have given the wrong date. And of course, the city birthday, as was mentioned, the Booster Car Show, I plan on being at all three events and look forward to seeing members of the community there. So with that, those are all my, those are all my comments. That concludes our meeting. And do we have a motion to adjourn? Okay, okay, great. Thank you. We will reconvene on August 13th. With that, convene.